Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, October 20th, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 7th, 2022, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 7th, 2022, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 7th, 2022, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video. You will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can press *9 to raise or lower your hand and *6 to mute or unmute yourself. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township, the 77.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai has been excused. Mr. Cristiano?
Here.
Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Spanville?
Here.
Ms. Talente?
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. But everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for our first responders and those both serving here and abroad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, approval of minutes. We have regular meeting, June 16th, 2022. Eligible voters, Mr. Bavai, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Husser, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Spanville, is Ms. Talente here?
Yes.
Ms. Talente and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I didn't get who was, who made the motion?
Josie said second.
No, who made the motion?
Me.
Thank you, Nick.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next regular meeting is July 21st, 2022. Eligible voters, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Castro, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Spanville, Ms. Talente, and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next approval of minutes is regular meeting, August 4th, 2022. Eligible voters, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Castro, Mr. Spanville, and Ms. Talente. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Regular meeting is for meeting minutes, it's September 15th, 2022. Eligible voters, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Husser, Mr. Nacastro, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Spanville, Ms. Talente, and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next reading minutes is regular meeting, October 6th, 2022. Eligible voters, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Husser, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Spanville, and Ms. Talente. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
And Ms. Talente?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, do I have any vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening. Yes, we have an ordinance, number 2269, regarding the SED zone. I don't know if Christine wants to cover that, or... And it was introduced by the council, and it's up for public adoption November 1st, which is before our next meeting. So we have to vote on whether it's substantially consistent with the master plan.
Brian, Ms. Bell, do you want to be sworn in?
Sure.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Um, I found this ordinance to be consistent with the master plan. I'm sorry, my computer is acting a little bit slow, so I'm pulling it up at the moment. But I did find it to be consistent with the master plan and the goals of the master plan. One minute, and I will tell you exactly what. Sorry.
Okay. Counselor, I think it was just the introduction of the assembly and packaging designation in the permitted uses, correct?
Yeah, I think they were left out when the ordinance was done back in June.
It's, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's an effort to clarify what constitutes a, and what is permitted as part of the permitted uses in the zone. So it's a, it's an effort at clarification rather than, I think, introduction of things that are entirely new to the zone. But as Ms. Bell stated, you know, she's taken a look at the master plan, and however you'd like to characterize it, she finds that the proposal is substantially consistent.
Thank you. No one else has any further questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I know, I know, we're just, whether it's consistent or master plan, but assembly and packaging, do you think that maybe might open the door for, like, fulfillment? I mean, I know warehouse is not part of it, but it's, it just says "assembly and packaging", I mean, I can, when I first thought I could think of ways of how to make that fulfillment, I came up with a bunch.
We addressed fulfillment centers when we were doing, if you remember, several meetings ago, we had like a dozen different ordinances. So we specifically addressed fulfillment centers, so this doesn't impact the definition that we gave it at that time.
And Ron, they're not permitted uses, right?
That's correct. It's not considered a warehouse.
Okay, just, when I see "assembly and packaging", it's, because it's not referencing any of the things above it, I just been interpreted kind of as a, I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm not a legal expert on it, I just was wondering if we maybe make it more specific than just "assembly and packaging".
Well, what we don't want to do is have multiple ordinances that are seeking to do the same thing. We want each, you know, one ordinance to do that. But just to bring the board's recollection back, the way that we had looked at fulfillment centers was less about, you know, the operations inside and more about the fact that the delivery was not to, like, wholesalers and retailers, the delivery was, you know, directly to end users, people's homes, and, and things like that. That, that was what the ordinance was seeking to prevent, because that's a more intense use, has far more vehicles associated with it, you know, creates more noise and activity on the property, but it has to do with, you know, essentially where, you know, the product being stored and, and how it's being delivered and to whom it's being delivered to.
Okay. Thank you.
Despite your question, Mr. Dorado? All right, if nobody else has any other comments or questions, since there was a question about that, Ron, is that something that will be put in an email or something over to the council?
If you, if you want to make that part of your recommendation that is substantially consistent, but seek confirmation that it does not do anything to alter the existing regulations regarding, or expand any permitted uses to include fulfillment centers.
As Ron, as Ron stated, does anybody want to put a motion on the table?
I'll put a motion that is consistent with the master plan, Brian.
Including what Ron had?
Well, I understand the explanation. If somebody else doesn't understand the explanation, then they want it, and they're fine. I understand the explanation. I know fulfillments aren't allowed in Howell Township. Yep, so.
Sounds good.
I'll second, Rob.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. That's all the correspondence I had this evening.
Okay. Resolutions, case number SP-1103, Woodmont Senior Living LLC. Eligible voters are Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Mr. Spanville, Ms. Talente, and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, submission waivers, case number SP-11069 North Realty. Do you want to swear in our?
Attorney for that?
Professionals, Ron, while we're getting the attorney up?
Oh, hold on.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Carol, you're muted.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to just go through the submission waivers?
Well, just before you do that, let's just have the attorney enter their appearance.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dennis Collins. I have the responsibility of representing 9 North Realty this evening for the submission waiver hearing. It's commonly known as the Ivy League. I would defer to either one of the engineers, I'm not sure of your process, but these are submission waiver requests that relate to the checklist items and other site plan issues.
We'll turn it over to Laura.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the submission waivers, and they're quite lengthy, are all itemized in our review letter. However, given this is a very minor application, essentially, they're looking to permanently permit their outdoor storage area, so, I'm sorry, outdoor seating area for outdoor dining. So, given the nature of what's proposed here, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for deeming the application complete.
Thank you. Does anybody from the board have any questions? Counselor, anything further? No, if I say anything, I would perhaps snatch the feet from the jaws of victory, so I'll keep my mouth shut. Sounds good.
Correct, I'll make the motion, Brian.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and look forward to seeing you when our hearing is scheduled.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Next submission waiver is case number SP-852A Village Square at Howell LLC.
Let me just swear everyone in again. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
Is there an attorney on this one?
Mark Brightman?
I think I'm, there I am. Good evening, members of board. My name is Mark Brightman. I'm an attorney in Hazlet, New Jersey. I'm here to represent the applicant, Village Square at Howell LLC.
Thank you. Any questions?
Sure, so, Mr. Chairman, similarly, there are a bunch of submission waivers itemized in our report. The board's probably familiar with the site, but the application is limited to adding, I believe, eight parking spaces. So again, given the scope of this application, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Thank you. Okay, is anybody on the board have any comments? If not, counselor, any other additional comments?
No, I thank the board for its attention to this application, and we're ready to proceed at the next available date.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion?
So moved, Brian.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you, you too.
Bye now.
Okay.
Bye bye.
So we have two, two applicants on the board here, and they may or may not take quite a bit of time, I don't know how the board feels before we get into these, but I have an early morning meeting tomorrow, and I'm not able to stay past 10 o'clock. Does anybody else have, have any restrictions?
I concur, we should have a hotline 10 o'clock, but.
Okay.
Agreed.
Carol, any issues with that?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, first applicant up is case number SP-109890 Industrial Court LLC. Eligible voters, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Mr. Castro, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Spanville, Ms. Talente, and myself. Is there anybody else that we missed that needed to certify? Thank you.
This is Mr. Pape.
Good evening. Am I coming through?
Yes. Mr. Pape, who do I need to bring into the hearing for you? I have Peter Strong.
Peter Strong, Stephen Redasti, Scott Kennel. The applicants are present, but I'll, if we need to bring them in, I'll, I'll do so later.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then, with permission, Mr. Chair, may I begin?
You may.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, board members, professionals, and public, this is an application to construct a 70,320 square foot building for storage and office space. It is a building that is proposed to be constructed on a 4.69 acre parcel in the industrial park that was created approximately two years ago when this planning board approved the industrial court, industrial park subdivision. It happens to be the central lot, it's in the middle of the capital P that is created by that, that subdivision approval. The, amongst the principles of the applicant is Saul Sigmund, who also owns Janico, the business that is in the building immediately adjacent to this. And the purpose of this application is to create additional area for the expansion of that business. We're going to present the building to you through the testimony of Peter Strong, who designed the site, Steve Redasti, who designed the building, and Scott Kennel, who is our traffic expert. This application was begun on April 4th. The board members may recall that as a courtesy to the applicant, somewhere around 20 minutes to 10, the applicant was given an opportunity to present the application in a broad broche manner by the, by me and by Mr. Strong. The board took jurisdiction of the application, and then we concluded after just the introductory remarks. This evening, I'm going to ask that Mr. Strong present a summary of the few minutes of testimony that he provided to the board that evening, and then we'll go right into the substance, the substantive presentation of the application.
Mr. Pape, if you don't mind, before you get into there, could you just, a couple of housekeeping items, if you don't mind?
Surely.
They're in my packet, it indicates that the Environmental Commission had requested a meeting, do you know if that took place?
Mr. Chairman, I went to the Environmental Commission in March and was there extensively. I also was at the meeting on August 18th, I went there to go over pending applications. I did not discuss this application that evening, I did not know that it was their request that I return to the Environmental Commission.
Okay.
I have no problem returning to them, we, I probably go to every one of their Environmental Commission meetings.
Okay, and then the other one, I thought, was it Shade Tree had some comments?
There was a request that we confirm the accuracy of the tree replacement.
Is that the Woodlands, yeah, needs Woodlands Management Plan to include tree removal and replacement?
And Mr. Strong's prepared to testify that we are overplanting on site, and there's no deficiency.
Do you know if there's any other outside agencies that are, that are in need to be seen or reviewed? The Farmers Advisory said no comments.
No, Farmers Advisory, no comments. I did, I met with Shari Spiro on the site to make certain that we had an understanding of her requirements. I met with Fire Chief Lu, Fire Chief Lewis, but that, Fire Chief Lewis on two separate occasions to make certain that we had designed firstly firefighting water supply and then the driveway system to his satisfaction.
Yeah, his last, his last letter is from May, has there been any updates since that, that timeframe?
Yeah, just, he, there was a letter that he wrote responding to an inquiry that I made, asking if he was satisfied with the driveway system.
Okay, so we may be missing, missing that additional email in our packet?
I can tell you, it's, it's, uh, Fire Bureau 21 Fire.
Hey, Brian, while Mr. Pape is looking for it, our last comment for the Environmental Commission was in August, and Mr. Pape had met with us after that.
Thank you.
Okay.
And the last letter, there was a letter from Fire Chief Lewis here, I think I have it in my packet here. Yes. Oh, Mr. Chairman, Bob Lewis's letter of May 13th, that's the last letter. Yes, you accurately summarized this, and the width of the driveway is acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
And outside agencies beyond the town, we have final approval from the county, there's a final approval that was issued in March by the county, freehold soil is pending, and those are really the only outside agencies that were required.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Strong, if we could have Mr. Strong sworn, his credentials were placed on the record on August 4th, and he was accepted as a professional engineer, but if we could renew his swearing in.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Peter W. Strong, S.T.R.O.N.G., with Crest Engineering at 100 Reich Drive in Millstone.
And Mr. Strong, I'm going to ask if you could do, if you could introduce, first introduce the, the property through the regional photograph. Right, let me see if I can share my screen here. All right, can we see those? Perhaps we go to Ms. Rabano for some help? Oh, there you go.
Unfortunately, I can't help, I'm at home and don't have access to the file.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's here, come on.
And while we're doing that, is this something that was previously marked, or is this a new exhibit?
This is marked, is, Peter, is this the aerial display A18?
I think it's A19.
I was gonna say, so A19, aerial layout display A19.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, uh, the AA team was the one that came up and then disappeared, but this is essentially the same as that one, except we've got the, it shows both properties, Lot 4 of the, proposed Lot 4 from the industrial subdivision that was referred to by yourself, Ken, earlier, that was approved by the board as the industrial park subdivision, and then Lot 2 is the existing Janico building on Industrial Court at current time. And the orange shows the proposed building adding to Lot 4 with the two office elements in the dashed yellow lines on the either corner, and we have parking, car parking, or 15 cars in the, call it the north end of the site. Another 21 car spaces on the south end, and 13 loading docks in the, in the middle of the, I'll call the westerly side of the proposed building, which matches up with the existing loading docks that are part of the Janico building to the, or to the west.
Thank you. With this aerial photograph, board members, I wanted to bring to your attention, you'll see that there's what is farmland located in the upper right corner, and that farmland is now been abandoned, the rollback tax complaint was filed and was satisfied, and the rollback taxes have been paid, and the farmland activity has been abandoned. There's a significance to that, and the significance is that Ms. Beam, in her report, pointed out that certain buffers were required because of farmland. We provided evidence to her that the farm had been abandoned, and in fact, that land is owned by the applicant and the applicant's partners, it is the, the remainder of the industrial park. Peter, if you could?
Mr. Pape, just to, just to add on to that, we've... We, Mr. Pape, just to, um, just to add on to that, we've received the information from Mr. Pape and reviewed it and can confirm, we believe the buffers are no longer needed because it's no longer farmland.
Thank you. The, Mr. Strong, would you bring up the site plan?
Come on. Not cooperating. Here comes. Okay, sorry for the delay on that.
So, if, with the site plan in front of the board, to ask if you could just a little bit more color to your executive summary, and then we'll go through the statutory elements of the site plan point by point.
Yes, uh, the, uh, the orange portion of the plan is the proposed building that we're intending to construct. A total of seventy thousand three hundred and twenty square feet, of which seven thousand thirty-two are two office elements equally spaced on the northwest and southwest corners, with the intervening portion in the middle being warehouse. As I had stated previously, we have two car parking areas, fifteen car parking lot in the, of the northwest corner of the building and a twenty-one car parking lot off of the southwest corner. Total of thirty-six spaces, which matches the township ordinance requirements for the combined office and warehouse space proposed for this project. We also have a total of thirteen loading docks in, in the, in between the two office spaces, putting up to the warehouse and and basing to the westerly direction where the Janico building is on the adjoining Lot Two, which is called the existing warehouse building. Their loading docks are similarly placed along the easterly side of their building, so the area between the two buildings will be the primary truck movement and loading and unloading areas. We have provided, excuse me, stormwater management by several sand bottom infiltration basins, one along the west, sorry, easterly side of the building, and one along the south east, southwest corner of the building that would accept the runoff from the site and mitigate it to meet the NJDEP and township requirements with regards to quantity, quality and groundwater recharge.
And are those wet basins, dry basins?
Those would be dry basins, those would be dry basins. They would have sand bottoms. Obviously, when you have a storm, there'll be water in them, but within seventy-two hours, they would drain completely.
And our professionals, are they, are they, in your opinion, severely, severely sloped, where we should have a discussion about the type of vegetation that keeps people from wandering into them? Or the slopes?
They are.
We don't have any concerns?
I don't, I don't have any concerns.
I'm sorry, Mr. Strong, I was asking our engineers.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Given the area and the nature of it, it's more of a depression, it's a depression. It's not like a steep slope, so I have no issue with it, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, they're fairly, fairly wide and flat.
You see, you see no reason to have any vegetation around it, invasive vegetation?
Correct.
No, none other than what we've already provided on the landscaping plan, which you can see highlighted on, on this particular display.
Thank you, Mr. Strong. Ms. Newman, Ms. Newman answered my question.
Peter, I'm gonna go through the, some specific elements of the plan and ask that you address them. And the first question, when you were designing the, this site, what grading was required? If you could just give a brief description of what grading was required to accommodate this development?
Well, the, the site generally divides down the, down the middle of the property and drains naturally in the southeast and southwestern directions. There are no, no severe grades on this property. It's all fairly mildly sloping. Obviously, we had to create a flat area for the, for the warehouse building and a drop off for the loading docks to be accommodated. But the grading itself was not significant or severe with regards to getting the proposed grades to match the flow directions of the existing drainage shed or nor for concern about creating steep slopes or any significant problem areas that would be resulting in future with operations.
With regard to the stormwater system, I appreciate that you gave the overview to the board members, but I'd ask if you would make these statements on the record. The first is that these stormwater systems have been designed to be consistent with the requirements of the new DEP regulations from March of last year. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And the, there are also additional requirements of the township, and are these stormwater systems designed to be consistent with those requirements?
They are.
And as part of the new regulations, there is an operations and maintenance manual that must be prepared by your office, reviewed by the township, and when approved, recorded as a permanent deed restriction against the property. And in fact, did you prepare that O and M manual?
Uh, we have not prepared the O and M manual yet, but we will once the approval is in place and provide that as part of the resolution compliance.
And for the record, the applicant acknowledges that responsibility to record that as a restrictive covenant. And the last question I have with regard to the stormwater basin is that the stormwater system is to confirm that it's a private system and the maintenance obligations are private. No burden is created on the municipality.
That is absolutely correct.
And I trust that any remaining technical comments that appear in Ms. Newman's report, you can and you will address.
Yes, we will, and we can.
If we could go to the landscaping plan, and as this colored exhibit is before the board, I think it is worth noting that the, the building that's adjacent to it, the Janico building, which was approved some thirty-plus years ago, has a landscaping plan, but compared to the landscaping plan that's required by the current ordinance, I think that it is, it's, it's a little bit less. If you could just point out the landscaping elements of your plan, and if you could identify the number of trees that are removed and the number of new plants that are offered.
Yeah, the, just briefly, the existing Janico building has a strip of trees and vegetation along the entire industrial court frontage, which is grown up and is now mature, as well as some additional landscaping closer to the building. But it is significantly different, as you can see, from the proposed landscaping around the proposed, was new building. We have provided a hundred and twenty-six new trees that we're going to be planting to replace the one hundred and twenty-four that would be required to be replaced by the Woodlands Management Ordinance, so that we have exceeded the requirements for, for that and provide shade trees, not only in and around the parking lots, to enhance the quality of the, the viewscape, but to provide, provide shade to the cars and pedestrians that will be utilized in the area, as well as enhancing the perimeter of the site, including the streetscape along industrial court to make that significantly more attractive to the traveling and pedestrian public that would be out there.
Mr. Strong, the township's ordinance requires landscaping on all sides of the building, and I know that you've got loading docks on the northern side of the building. I also know from talking to the landscape team at Crest Engineering that you found a way to place landscaping along that portion of the building and still preserve the, the loading dock function. If you could briefly describe that landscape element?
Yeah, um, as you said, the ordinance requires that the four sides of the building be landscaped, and obviously, when we have truck loading bays, opportunities there are very limited. In an effort to comply with the ordinance, we have provided a, a three-foot landscaping strip with low-growing shrubs in that area that would, the underneath the trailer bodies that would pull up to the loading dock and remain in place. That way, by being bridged over the, the building to the back of the truck. That was the way we were able to meet the ordinance requirements. I can't say that I'm thrilled about it, but it does meet the requirements. If the board thinks that we should keep that in place, then we certainly will. But it's not the norm.
But.
The loading dock area.
But it can be accommodated.
It can be accommodated, accomplished.
Very fine. And there is, if you could describe the lighting plan, the, it's my understanding that the lighting air, the area of the property that's to be illuminated by the new lights is between, primarily between the two buildings. If you could describe for the board the types of light fixtures, the type of bulb, the height of those fixtures, and then the waiver relief that the applicant requests for the lighting plan.
Yes, the, the lights are pole-mounted, twenty-five feet high, LED fixtures, downward facing to illuminate glare off, off to the sides and, and above it. So it's all directed to the pavement and pedestrian walkway areas. We have provided a minimum lighting intensity level of half a foot candle, which meets the IES standards, and we have a a maximum, or sorry, an average lighting intensity level of four point three, which is slightly above both the ordinance requirements and the IES standards. But we're not, we weren't able to, our lighting guy wasn't able to find a way to meet all of the standard requirements, though we're looking for that waiver for a slightly elevated average intensity.
And are you comfortable advising the board that the lighting intensity that is shown, although not consistent with the ordinance in all aspects, is supported by the IES standards?
Yes, and, and it also is worth noting that the, the lighting is essentially in between the two buildings, so that it would not be glaring on other properties or other residences or any of that sort. There's nothing, nothing in the area that would be interfered with by slightly elevated lighting levels.
You've spoken to the parking and, and circulation. Those are important elements of the plan. I think when Mr. Kennel joins us, we'll go into it in detail. But it's, if you could confirm that there is one new access driveway, and there's one existing driveway that both of which will be interconnected to serve both sites?
Yes, um, the this better shows both, both sites in full. The, there is an existing driveway along the well, the westerly side of the Janico building with an entranceway off of Industrial Court on the west, northwest, no, sorry, northeast corner of the site, the Janico site. That would be expanded and utilized by both the new building and the existing building for ingress and egress for both trucks and cars. And in addition, there's a second entrance on the Janico site out to Industrial Court, an interconnection to the car parking on the southwest corner of the proposed facility that would be able to utilize that to get out to industrial court.
If we could, a couple of smaller technical items, if you could go back to your site plan and identify the location of the trash enclosures and confirm that the requested revisions have been made to those trash enclosure designs?
Mr. Pape, before you go to that, I have a question on that in the circulation.
Sure.
If, if Mr. Strong could address. Industrial Court, that network of road, that's internal, right? That doesn't come out to Van de Verre or any other road, does it?
It does. It's a capital P in its shape, Mr. De Castro. The subdivision approval by the planning board creates that capital P, and it comes out one place, and.
That's what I want. So there's one, there's one exit and entrance onto Van de Verre?
Yes, sir.
So you're saying there's two access points? I'm not following it, because.
Oh, to the, to our client's site.
Internally.
Yes, from industrial into our site.
Mr. Pape, could you please go to, Mr. Strong, could you go to your cover sheet?
Sure. So this, this is Van de Verre Road on the key map along the left side of the key map area. The existing industrial court has, goes up to about here, and it's kind of an S curve that goes around to the end of the Janico site, and then the new industrial park that was recently approved by the board extends that roadway all the way around and back out to Van de Verre Road again. So it's a loop. Industrial Court will be a total loop that goes from Van de Verre Court back to Van de Verre Court. At the end of your road, sorry.
Is that industrial court road network completely finished?
No. It's only, it's only built up to the end of the Janico site. The rest of it is yet to be built.
And that was supposed to be built in the first initial approval?
That was part of the subdivision approval to create the additional five or six or seven new industrial lots.
Your applicant is the owner of that industrial park, and as a condition of the site plan is prepared to make that, to install that roadway and drainage system?
Mr. Pape, I'm familiar with this application, where this area is, and I believe that network road was supposed to be installed in the, in, in phase one of the original warehouse. It hasn't been completed, but that's neither here or there. He's gonna have to do it, I guess. He just hasn't done it for whatever reason.
Well, the, the resolution of approval that created that new road system was approximately two years ago, and we are just finished with resolution compliance and just about ready to post the bonds with the town. We just got the letters from the township engineer indicating everything is ready. So it'll be built by our client, and as soon as we will perfect the filing of the map, then the improvements will be installed.
Could I ask a question, Rob?
Sure.
I mean, the, the sounds like that, that road is required in order for them to be able to expand this.
I was on the governing body. I remember this being an issue, this, this internal network being an issue. I just don't remember all the details, but there was an issue with that inner network. So I don't know if all those issues have been resolved.
And then, Mr. Pape, if that is in fact the case, you know, does, was that, was that extension designed in the original filing with all of its various storm water management? Or does it need to be part of this filing in order for allow this building to continue to move forward?
The subdivision approval that this board granted in two thousand twenty has the road system that Mr. De Castro is, is making reference to, and it has a stormwater system for the road. This, this site plan has a stormwater system for this site plan.
But you can see.
We have to build both.
So you, but you can see how this cover sheet leaves us to believe that that extension is part of the future when it should be shown as, as pretty much being done, right?
But it's, it's not intended to be. it's not intended to be misleading. It's it's approved. But it's the subdivision is approved. It was approved by this board and all other agencies. It has not been filed. And it has not been built. They're not out of time on that. And if the, if this board grants this site plan, the subdivision will be perfected. The subdivision improvements will be installed and the site improvements would be installed, all as a prerequisite to any use of the property.
Mr. Pape, let me understand something. You keep saying the this board approval in twenty twenty. The original warehouse that the janitorial suppliers are in, when was that approval?
Oh, gosh.
Yes, many years ago.
Thirty plus years ago. I was involved in it thirty some years ago.
And the beginning of industrial way network started probably back then, correct?
It was in place when that application came forward and I I think it ended at that little cul-de-sac bulb that you can see. Kind of a, at the top, that's it.
I I think it's a little back further, but let's let's say you're right.
Yeah.
When when twenty years ago, twenty five years ago, when that first warehouse was initially approved with that network of roadway, it was supposed to have been completed because I remember there was a problem between the applicant and the town why that road wasn't complete.
Mr. De Castro, I I have no knowledge of that. I do know that in in two thousand nineteen and twenty, a new subdivision plan was brought by your current applicants to the planning board and they earned that subdivision approval with this road system and this drainage system. I don't know about the subdivision thirty years ago. I have no knowledge of that.
Okay, I I'll ask the rest of my questions, but as you continue. You have a traffic expert with you, Ken?
We we do.
Okay.
Hey, Brian, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
If, so if industrial court was approved and reportedly supposed to be constructed, are they not subject to the new stormwater management rules because they were approved prior to them going into effect? So how does that work?
Would you, the applicant or the or the town?
Well, I think they they they've said they're they're agreeing to comply with the new regulations. I think that's what your statement was, right, Mr. Pape?
The subdivision approval was approved in two thousand twenty and we've achieved perf- we've achieved resolution compliance. That the subdivision approval had a drainage system for the roadway. And that drainage system is not compliant with the one that went into existence in two thousand twenty one. But this individual lot that Mr. Strong has designed has a stormwater system that's fully compliant. And that's what's, that's the application before you.
Okay, I feel we're gonna be coming back to this roadway, Mr. Pape, but let's, as Mr. De Castro stated, let's continue with the, uh, discussion. Uh, your your traffic expert and so forth, and then we'll
Sure.
the circle back, get it clarified.
Surely, Mr. Strong, um, uh, trash enclosures, please, could we could go back to the question that I posed to you is, did you make the necessary trash enclosure corrections that were requested by staff?
Yes, there, um, there are four trash enclosures proposed, um, two of those, um, the two on the well, the southern end of the, uh, Janico site are to replace two existing uh, trash enclosures that are along the property line at the current time. It will have to be removed in order to make the, uh, the driveway and trucking area in between the two sites as one unimpeded area. And there are two others, one, one here by the, uh, uh, exist, the proposed office on the southwest corner of the building. And another one, uh, over here, that would be for the the other tenant of the building near the northwest corner of the site. Both of those, um, let's see if I can blow that up. The, uh, all of those enclosures have landscaping proposed around them, which we believe is compliant with the requirements of the township and the, uh, the, uh, your engineering and landscaping consultants.
To the extent that any modifications or additions are required by Ms. Spiro or her staff, I trust that you'll.
We would be happy to accommodate. Yes.
If I could fire comments, there were comments from the fire, from Fire Chief. He wanted a remote F D C. He wanted two fire hydrants and he wanted striping. If you could identify where the fire striping will be and where you've placed the fire hydrants and the remote F D C per chief's request.
Yeah, and Mr. Strong, if you could, just so for the board and the and the audience, just please explain what F D C stands for, please.
Yeah, F D C is a, uh, a fire department connection, which is a, uh, something similar to a fire hydrant that, uh, is out by the, the, uh, driveway or street and is remote from the building that, uh, the fire department can connect to and actually pump water into the building through the fire sprinkler system. Uh, and in this particular case, the, uh, fire department connection would be in the area near the, uh, trash enclosure that we just talked about by the, uh, northwest, uh, office space. The, uh, fire hydrant, uh, that Mr. Pape was talking about is, there's one here at the corner of the main driveway and the secondary driveway into the parking spaces near the office space. And then there's another one that is out, uh, on the industrial court, uh, extension area, so that there's the two hydrants are there and the fire department connection is right there. This is the, uh, fire chief requested.
The fire chief also proved the twenty five foot internal driveway and thirty foot for the remainder. If you could confirm that your design has those elements.
Yes, the, uh, the parking, parking areas, the individual car parking areas have driveways that, uh, uh, are twenty five feet and, uh, the main, um, truck entrance driveway is at least thirty feet. In most cases, it's, uh, forty or forty five feet.
I could ask a question on that because you're showing a job in the road. So what happens if the existing warehouse has vehicles loading against it? Do you have a plan that shows that?
Not quite sure I understand the question, but so here here's the trucks that are in the loading bays.
Yeah, what about the other one, the existing building?
And Ms. Newman, I had the same similar question. I was gonna ask which side of the existing building is the loading dock in orientation to the new building?
The loading docks are in in this area here for the existing building. And the loading docks for the new building are here.
And if the the loading in in, do you have a plan that shows the trucks? I think this was saying you have a plan that shows the trucks parked in the existing warehouses loading dock and how that relates to the, uh, the aisle way that you've created. Because it kind of, it kind of looks like to me graphically the the truck loading dock closest to the plan left by that tree cluster, the existing warehouse, the truck may stick a little bit into the drive aisle. Is that, that?
My exact concern.
I don't think so, but perhaps our traffic consultant can shed some light on that.
That's fine, but just for the record, it's been in my report for some time. Uh, I mean, I agree. I know that's in a technical comment, but I, as long as there's an exhibit or something that shows that, um, and if the traffic witnesses the appropriate one, I'll hold it for that time.
Thank you. Peter, if you could confirm that there was a request that there be fire lane striping and that the fire lane striping request of Chief Lewis will be accommodated on a separate plan and submitted to him for approval.
Sure, absolutely.
The board understand where the fire lanes are?
Oh, Peter, sure, for me, take Mr. Fire Chief Lewis's letter. I'll read it into the record. Fire Chief Lewis, in his refi- report of December twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one, says, we'll need fire lane from truck entrance on industrial court to just beyond dumpster enclosure to ensure there are no parking in front of the hydrant or the remote F D C connection.
So that would be in this, in this area here. That would be the fire lane.
Thank you.
Is there any reason why you guys didn't revise the plans since the report was dated twenty twenty one?
We've revised the plan a number of times, Ms. Newman, coming in before you, you, Shari and
Are you speaking specifically to the fire lane? It was just noted that you could imply the comment was from, I think, December of twenty twenty one. I was just wondering if there's a reason why it wasn't done so that the board could see that.
The the answer is no, there's no reason. We apologize if it creates any confusion, but we were prepared to testify to it this evening.
Can you depict again where the fight, where the fire lane is? I'm, I'm, it's so small, I can't see the.
I can read it to you and.
Sorry about that.
He 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 bring it up. So what's those black ashes?
Peter, I think that the turning template plan isn't the right plan to make the demonstration if we go to the site.
Okay, okay.
While we're waiting for that, Eileen. So, Mr. Spanville is, uh, in the attendee.
Yes, I can't move him till they stop sharing their screen.
Fair enough.
I already informed him that, but he can see and hear everything, so.
Okay, thank you.
So Chief Lewis indicated that he wanted the fire lane to extend, uh, past the fire, fire hydrants and the the, our department connection, which are here and here, so that this area uh, of the driveway would be striped and signed as a fire lane.
And how wide is that firing?
Whatever Chief Lewis says it should be.
It's, it's the, it's the full.
I don't know what Chief Lewis says it has to be. I'm asking you what it should be.
It's the full travel way, Mr. De Castro.
No width, not left.
It's the travel. It's the full width of the travel way.
You usually what what happens is you either put signage along the curb line and or you put uh, no parking fire lane, um, written, uh, you know, painted on the, on the pavement, uh, to.
The pavement will show no parking filing.
Yes, yes.
With signage.
Yeah, Fire Chief gave us the detail. It's attached to his report of December twenty ninth. The actual detail for how to stripe it is.
It's it's yellow lettering on top of the black pavement. Says no, no parking fire lane.
And just to ensure that we would have enforcement powers for that, Title thirty nine would be assigned?
Title thirty nine is offered to the town for enforcement of all regu- all traffic regulations on site, yes. Are there further questions on this point, or may we proceed? Mr. Chair, may we proceed?
Yes, please. I'm sorry, I was writing my notes.
I'm, thank you. There was a discussion about sidewalks at the time that the subdivision was created and there were no sidewalks shown on the industrial park subdivision. We do not have sidewalks on the plan, but we have no issue installing them if that is the request of the board. We would look to the board for guidance as to whether there's sidewalk installation or sidewalk contribution. Uh, we.
And I'll look to 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 my engineer to give us her opinion, what she feels would be appropriate for this internal, internal roadway that.
Just given the nature of the industrial court, I don't know that it would be appropriate to have, um, sidewalk out here. Um, none of this will be open to the public, is that correct?
None of this will be.
None of the intended users.
What about in the future?
There's no retail at all. No, this is strictly an industrial site.
What about in the future as it as it gets going?
We're prepared to, we're asking this board for approval of an industrial building with with office elements. We stipulate that the office elements are only for the warehouse storage building. There's no independent rental of space to anyone that's not the primary tenant.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Pape. Um, my spike, let me rephrase my question.
Surely.
So the the site plan has other lots that are gonna be able to be perfected in the future. And I don't particularly remember all of the particulars of the previous approval. Are are all of the lots, the other lots in this, the subdivision all going to be of the similar type, or could there be an opportunity in the future to have something else because that was in the original subdivision approval? And and therefore, would those other uses potentially need a sidewalk that?
I don't know the answer to the question about what the future will bring. I can tell you that we have, this is ninety industrial in the pipeline and some of them have already been submitted is ninety two, ninety four and ninety six. And they are all similar industrial buildings. They're all owned by the applicant and the applicant's business partners. They're all coming in as industrial buildings.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing I think I need to say in fairness is, you know, what are the permitted uses in the S E D zone, which is what this is located in? And while a lot of it specifies manufacturing or warehousing, we do allow for microbreweries, we do allow for multipurpose recreation, sports complexes, health clubs or fitness centers. So if the board saw fit and we wanted to make sure that we were gonna get the sidewalk along industrial court, now would be the time to ask for it as well.
Or or is, or is it, I'd have to ask this chair if this is even legal. Is there a way to put something in the resolution? Let me step back for a second. Where are we at with our ordinance? Do we have the sidewalk fund? Is it in or out? I can't remember where where we're at.
It's in for commercial development.
Okay, so is it possible that, let's say, our, our, our professionals feel with this particular application and this particular type of building they're proposing, it doesn't make sense to have sidewalks on industrial court or anywhere else um, as part of the subdivision at this particular time. Seems that the applicant has decided they don't feel it necessary, that that's why they've removed them from their plans, which means that they're going to be submitting, uh, contribution to the sidewalk fund. If if one of the other types of uses does come around, it is going to bring public to the site and would warrant, uh, having a sidewalk, is it, is it able to be put in the resolution that the applicant knows that risk? That if the board feels as this subdivision continues to be perfected and something does a come up that may need to have a sidewalk, they will have to put sidewalks in everywhere knowing that they put money into the sidewalk fund for this particular application.
I would, the way that I would word it, if the board determines that it's going to accept a financial contribution is that that decision was based specifically on this proposed use of the property and the might not have reached the same decision if there were other permitted uses on the property and that the board reserves the right. Uh, well, first of all, that the board requires a use that is not the same as what is being approved. Um, come back to the board, you know, if it wants to occupy this space in the future and that the board would reserve its right to require actual construction at that time. And I think that would protect the, uh, it'd be very explicit, protect the board's rights. And what I would further, uh, recommend, if there is an approval, that this resolution be recorded so that any future purchaser or user so that any future purchaser or user who does a title search is doing during due diligence would see that exact language. In the absence of it being recorded, a title search wouldn't, wouldn't reveal it. So for notice purposes, I think that the resolution should be recorded.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, that's no objection.
Other questions, Mr. Castro, looks like you may have a question.
Yeah, is there a rendering of this building of how it's going to look?
Yes.
Architectural rendering?
Yes.
Is that possible to bring up?
Mr. Steve Rodastia, our architect, is with us this evening and he will be presenting the building, Mr. Castro.
You want to wait till, till you bring him in? I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think so. It's, it's his, it's his plan and he'll present it better than Peter or me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about sidewalk from anybody else on the board?
Well, it may come up later after we see the rent. For me, it may come up as we see the rendering of the building.
So not, not to beat a dead horse here, but I mean, if, if this has an industrial court address, right? I mean, Vanderbeer is kind of out of the picture, right? As far as sidewalks go, right? If it's an industrial court address.
So Mr. Husser, I think Ms. Newman brought up the point that this is an SED zone. And there are, there are permitted, there are permitted uses in this SED zone.
I, I, I understand that. I understand that. But if, if industrial court i- is the development, right? Or, or the other areas of industrial court, right? That's the actual physical address of possible future development. Is Vanderbeer Court part of that? You know, you know what I'm trying to say? Like.
I, I think, I think what we, what we came across is, is, is we can leave it as they have it now, but the board has the option when those other applications come in, if it does, does present and warrant the need for a sidewalk, the owner would be on the hook to put it in at that time.
On Vanderbeer.
On, on, on their, on industrial court and be part of their, their.
That, that was my question. Okay.
Because the last thing we want to do is have a, have one of these buildings pop up, have a little bit of sidewalk in front of that building and not have the rest of industrial court figured out.
Understood. I was, I was asking about Vanderbeer. That, that's out of the picture, correct? As far as.
Sure. I'm not sure there was any jurisdiction to put sidewalks on Vanderbeer because some.
That, that was my, that was.
I, I think our only opportunity there would be if we had one of the lots being developed along industrial court, if any of those actually have frontage on Vanderbeer.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so it sounds like Mr. Payton, we're going to hold on the sidewalk discussion until we, like it sounds like until we see your architectural.
Very fine. I, one last element I would like Peter to identify. Peter, there's a single monument sign that is proposed. If you could identify the location of the monument sign.
Uh, yeah, the, the monument sign is located approximately in the, this area where I'm pointing. Geez, I'm sorry. There we go. So it's, it's in the area at the, near the intersection of the existing driveway, near the northwest corner of the office element in the green space where I'm pointing. So that's where the sign is located, certainly on the landscaping plan, which I don't have right with me.
This, Mr. Chair, board members in the planners report, there's a comment that the sign dimensions are not consistent with the ordinance. Mister, the applicant will modify the sign, so it is consistent with the ordinance. It's our understanding that a three by 10, a three by 12 or a four by 10 sign is the maximum monument sign. And, and the sign will comply with those dimension requirements. Peter, if you could confirm, there's no variances associated with where the sign placement is, is shown.
No, there isn't.
Mr. Chair, I have no further direct examination of Mr. Strong other than to ask that, Mr. Strong, have you participated in the multiple meetings with the board's professionals? And if you reviewed their reports, and are you comfortable advising the board that you can and you will comply with the remaining technical requests of the board's professionals?
Yes, I am familiar and I can and will comply.
Thank you.
I have nothing further of Mr. Strong, Chairman. He is your witness.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Ms. Newman, you, you had a couple of waivers and variances and some other comments. Can you summarize what is still out there that the client has agreed to comply with? Or do you believe that there is still something out there that does need to be complied with?
I didn't hear anything on number of signs, though I heard about the one sign.
Yeah, building signs will be removed. There's only one sign. The only sign we would ask on the building is numerals for fire safety or for fire, say, fire and safety identification, but no, no facade signage. Thank you.
Um, did you talk about the, I didn't hear any testimony relative to the pavement and the porous pavement differences?
Ms. Ms. Newman, before you move on, before we move on, does that, does that satisfy your, your comment?
That would eliminate the relief, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Strong, if you could identify the limited areas on the site where porous pavement has been used.
Yes, we have two areas. One, the sorry, 15 car parking lot near the northwest building corner would be porous pavement. And the truck loading area would be pervious concrete. Those are the only two areas that we're proposing for pervious or porous pavement.
And that is to meet the green infrastructure requirements?
I'm sorry, say it again.
And that's to meet the green infrastructure requirements?
That's correct, yes.
And do you have parking between parking stalls and sidewalk? No protective bollards?
We, uh, we will provide bollards. I think they were asked for on the, the area where the 11 parking spaces next to the building by the northwest office corner. We would provide bollards in the, that, that location. Yes.
And can you speak to the ramps? So we have a section curving between vehicular and pedestrian ways shall be designed with periodic ramps from the street or parking grade to the sidewalk, which shall be no less than 65 feet, then one every 65 feet?
Yes, we will, we'll provide those. Yes. I thought we had actually, but I will make certain that they are on the plan.
So to be clear, then the waivers were left with is to deal with lighting utens, lighting intensity?
Yes.
The driveway width between the 24 and 30 feet as you testify to?
Yes.
The use of porous pavement in lieu of regular pavement specification in the pavement and loading?
Yes.
And then the board would have to weigh in on sidewalk?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, that would be the limit of the relief.
Okay.
Based upon the waivers in our report.
Okay, I just have one question and then we'll get to Ms. Bell. Mr. Strong, the loading docks, do they drain towards the building or away from the building?
Away.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I got one question. I just need clarification before we let Mr. Strong go, and I don't know who said the words. There was reference made to these buildings being identified as industrial buildings. What's the difference between an industrial building and a warehouse?
Oh, this, Mr. Castro, this building has storage. It is a warehouse. And with it, with the office elements.
So then you would also acknowledge in our SED ordinance that warehouses can be divided into 5,000 square foot separations. Correct?
It's our understanding that that's the smallest. We're stipulating that this building would only be two tenants. It would be either one tenant or two. It would not be cut down any smaller than that. The office elements and the parking lots dictate that.
Okay. That's all I got for, for now.
Okay, thank you. Good point.
Mr. Chair, we're going to go to Mr. Ken.
Hold on, Mr. Mr. Payton, we didn't get to Ms. Bell. She has a bunch of variances in Jen Bean's report from the professional planner. I'd like to put on the record as well. Please make sure that all of her variances and or waivers have been satisfied.
Right, so as we stated earlier, the property behind this property has abandoned the farm use, so the buffers are no longer required. That's fine. I think Ms. Newman did go through most of the additional waivers that are needed. The signage will comply, the lighting waivers needed, the aisle with a waiver is needed. The sidewalks, it's really up to the discretion of the board. I know Jen always, you know, says someone has to be the first to put a sidewalk in. If there's, you know, not a sidewalk, someone needs to be the first one to put it in there, but you do have to weigh kind of if this area will continue to just be industrial uses, that it's only the tenants there. It may not be necessary, but if a brewery comes in or something, you, you might want to have the ability for people to walk around. Um, the only outstanding item in our report is the architectural design standards, but I think the architect will testify a little bit more to that.
Sorry, was muted. Yes, thank you. Mr. Payton, you may, may bring your next.
Just, just before that, Mr. Chairman, I know the, the lighting requirements, is that compliant or, or is design waiver really for, still required for that?
They do still require a waiver for the average.
Okay, I know Shari usually weighs in on that or, or I don't know who on our side would be the person. And Mr. Payton, I, I know there was a mention of lighting, but I, you know, I may have missed it, but was there any more, you know, direct testimony as to the nature of the relief and why it's appropriate?
Yeah, Mr. Strong did indicate that the minimum of point five is achieved, but that he could not achieve the maximum of 2.0 and achieve the minimum of point five. He's asked for a waiver to permit 4.3 as the maximum. But, and then to indicated that although that's not consistent with the ordinance, it is consistent with IES standards.
Right. I guess just on, on, on that, on our side, do we agree that's consistent with IES standards, which is typically what we've been looking for in these applications?
Yes, yeah, this does, it is consistent with them. I would like to know the hours of operation. What are the hours for the lighting?
The business that Mr. Saul Segman runs at Janico is a five day a week business. It's a single shift. But there are occasions where vehicles do come during the overnight hours. So to say that it's anything other than 24/7 would be, would be inaccurate. We could turn the lights that are on on the site. We could either dim them or turn them off overnight if requested. Because we're in the middle of an industrial park with no neighbors other than other industrial buildings, we ask that the board be mindful and allow the lights to be, be on 24, all the overnight dark hours.
So Ms. Bureau, the reason for your question, are you concerned because this part of the town is relatively, has a little less light pollution than other parts of the town? And then we want to try to minimize that. If, if that is back to your, your, your recommendation, could I recommend that maybe we add some motion sensors to the lights and allow it to go down to a dimmed level during off hours? And then, and then they can come to full brightness when there's a car that comes on.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree. I was going to ask him about the motion sensor lights. Really, I, I understand there's not residents right there, but you know, we're always trying to keep light pollution at a minimum.
Yeah. I, I believe that that is acceptable. I just need to check what. I, I will check. I'll have an answer in just a few minutes.
Okay.
So the recommendation, or the suggestion, Mr. Chair, is motion, motion sensors and a combination of, of, of dimming when, when, when there's not, not increased by motion.
Uh, yeah, I think a better way to say it would be, let's, let's say your normal hour, operating hours are eight tonight. So after nine, the lights go to a dimmed state for that minimum, minimum security requirements. And then, and then the motion sensors allow it to come to full brightness when there's a person walking around or, or a car or truck comes into the site.
Mr. Chair and Ms. Bureau, that sounds like a very well thought out plan.
And it would only be.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question though on that. They testified that it's one shift. So what are the hours of operation? I mean, do we really want the lights to dim at nine? Or would it be more appropriate earlier?
He did, he, I'll let him, can you please restate, Mr. Payton, what you said?
So it's a, it's a one shift operation. I'm not certain the hour that it closes. I think that their business closes around seven o'clock, but I can get that piece of information. It's, it's a, it's, it's a one shift operation and has been for some time. Mr., the, 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 the business that exists in, in the building has been in that building for seven years. The business is, is 18 years. It was the, the man who owns it founded it. And he has always run it as a single shift. So I would say that the, the day begins somewhere around eight to be on the safe side call at 7:00 AM. And the day ends somewhere around six to be safe call at seven o'clock. And agree that when we reach the seven o'clock hour, if time of year warrants it, the lights will be dimmed. Or if, if there's no reason to turn the lights on until later in the evening, they go on at a dimmed intensity overnight. That was intended to be a positive response to, Mr. Chairman, to your request.
I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you. If, is, there isn't anything further, I, the next witness was going to be Mr. Kennel, but to be responsive to the comments of Mr. Castro and others, we're prepared to introduce Steve Radosi and the building and present those elements to the board. May we have permission to do so? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Radosi has presented buildings to the boards in Howell for a number of years. I'm going to ask that he be sworn and then we'll share with you his credentials before he presents his testimony.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Stephen Radosi, S.T.E.P.H.E.N. Radosi, R.A.D.O.S.T.I.
Your credentials.
So I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I became licensed in 1996 after graduating New Jersey into technology in 1992. I'm a principal at Perez Radosi Associates Architects. And I presented in front of dozens of boards throughout New Jersey, including this one.
Thank you. We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Mr. Radosi, I'm going to ask if you could introduce your building to the board. I think the most important elements of the building are the exterior facade.
So I have here in front of me, this is exhibit A4. Sheet SK2, the proposed elevations, and this is dated 6/9/22. And this is already labeled exhibit A4. So if I could talk a little bit about the building, the proposed building is a one story precast or tilt up concrete structure, which would be 45 feet tall. It is 180 feet deep by 392 feet long. The building was designed for my client's use. However, the warehouse can be split in half for up to two tenants if for some reason he does not need the entire space. However, the warehouse can be split in half for uh up to two tenants if for some reason he does not need the entire space. Uh there's a total of six thousand, uh excuse me, sixty-three thousand two hundred eighty-eight square feet of warehouse space and seven thousand and thirty-two square feet of office space, for a total of seventy thousand three hundred and twenty square feet. Uh the building will be non-combustible construction and will be fully uh fire suppressed.
Mr. Rudasti?
Yes.
Could you, could you put on the record what the proposed interior clear height would be?
Uh so the so the total building is uh forty-five feet in height. So uh the interior height, uh once you reduce um for uh small parapets, uh the roof structure, uh the tapered insulation on the roof and the bar joists, uh it would be approximately forty feet in height.
Thank you. Just a quick question as well, do we have anything in color from this?
Um actually, these these are in color, they're it's um different shades of gray.
I need new glasses, alright.
No, I'm going to ask, I want to make a point to the board. So Mr. Rudasti has indicated that it's a fully suppressed building. Uh this um industrial court area has a private wa- uh firefighting water supply, it is in place. It, so there there's firefighting water in place. Currently, the property owner is exploring with New Jersey American Water, the potential of bringing um potable water supply. That that isn't, has not been finalized, but the firefighting water supply is in place for the building. So the suppression can be accomplished without bringing any new water supply.
And has that been checked to make sure that that um there isn't going to need to be a storage tank of any sort? That the the water supply is adequate to to support the fire suppression system, or is that still need to be designed?
Uh the 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 building suppression system would be part of the design of Mr. Rudasti. Looking, I recall that Mr. The Chief Lewis commented on the fact that there was a a private water supply in the area for firefighting, and he wanted us to connect to it, I think that was part of his. Part of his uh, sorry.
Oh, the the question is, is is is, I know it's available, the question is, is it adequate for this type of building?
Um, Mr. Chair? If I could uh jump in on that a little bit, Ken, maybe I can help you. The uh the uh original subdivision approval uh included the design of the fire suppression uh water line that would go up industrial court and all the way back down through uh Van Deavere Road to uh make a loop system out of that. And there was, there was a separate consultant that provided a report indicating that uh by doing that, a firefighting supply of fifteen hundred gallons a minute would be uh available to uh all the buildings on the site, which was deemed adequate for the uh uh requirements of the industrial park.
And Mr. Strong, was that report done when the uh first building was built?
No, this was uh when the the subdivision that was approved in twenty twenty, uh when that was done, the report was done at that point in time. So I I got a copy of it when we first started the uh site plan designs.
So just so I'm clear, all of the improvements then within industrial court are going to be fully built, including this water main for fire suppression prior to uh issuance of C O for this?
That was the agreement that we reached working with you during the staff meetings, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Papek, can you just orient the building? Uh so the north elevation, the south, I'm I'm assuming the south elevation is the rear of the building, could you like front rear, left and right?
So uh, Mr. Rudasti, if you could, the lowest elevation, the one at the bottom of the page.
Yes.
You could identify that on the site plan.
Okay, so that is the east elevation. Um so on the, on the site plan, that that is um uh facing away from the loading areas, that is facing uh towards the east of the site.
Is that considered the front of the building? Mr. Rudasti, is that considered the front of the building?
Um, actually, I, uh the the front of the building really is is the west. Um and then as well as um as well as uh the the north elevation, up at the top of the page. Uh because the north, as you enter into the driveway, you would see the north elevation, the shore elevation at the top of the page. And then as you drive in, uh you would go past the west elevation. Um and the west elevation is the faces the other uh warehouse building that's existing.
So your north elevation has two, I I assume there are entrances with windows, what what's like number five?
So so our office area is from uh this column line here, towards the front. And then it wraps around the corner on the west elevation here. So that one office is in that, in that corner, where if we have a second office, it would be in the other corner on the other side, which would be here on the south elevation, as well as this portion on the west elevation.
So when employees come to work, they're going to enter one entrance, there's only one entrance on that building? Or possibly a second entrance if you divide it?
Well, I I have multiple, yeah, if if you divide it, there would be entrance here and here, um I have.
I'm sorry, I showed, I I didn't see, I didn't see your mouse, where you said, in here and there.
Sorry there, uh also in the west elevation, there's door, a door here and a door over here. And um around the corner, there's additional glass for the office area, and there would be another door. But that door will mostly be uh a secondary uh egress in case of fire from the office.
So you have one, how how many, how many doors represent the fire emergency exits in the building?
Well, throughout the building, we have, we have other doors around the building, um around the east elevation. Um it basically, in case of a fire, um there has to be exits every so often. So we have doors throughout the facade, the building for those exits.
They're not shown on the, they're not shown on the plans?
Uh they they are on the plans, they're on the floor plan and and on the elevations, there's doors.
Not, not the outside?
Uh they they are, if you look here on the east elevation, you could see doors. If you, can you see my current, let me zoom in a little bit more here. So if you look.
Oh, I see next to the bays you're talking about.
Yeah, so so this part, for aesthetic reasons, we have the building set in slightly where these entrances are, and then we have a cantilevered roof, uh and we have a door with glass. Um and and even though that's the back of our building, we did that for aesthetic reasons to break up the building elevation. Um we we worked with Jennifer Bean on the design of the uh building elevation. And uh we added a lot more detail than we originally had, um mostly for aesthetic purposes. But there's doors every so often along this elevation.
So it's thirteen bays and two emergency exit doors in the rear?
Could you, um, Mr. Resto, could you, could you orient, could you go to your next plan in your set, the one before this?
Uh sure.
Orient, orient that from the floor plan scenario?
Okay, so I have here sheet S K one, which is part of the same exhibit. Um this is the floor plan, I'll just get the north arrow there so you could see it. So we have the north arrow here, the north corner of the building is this corner here. There's a proposed office area in this side corner, and there's another proposed office area in this corner. Um here are the loading date, uh loading docks, so we have the the thirteen overhead doors here. Um we have the ramp here and the ramp here for um the forklifts. We have the main entrance to this office right here, at in this corner, and the main entrance to this office at this corner. You can see the glass continues around the corner. Um so that all the office space has natural light. And then around the building, I'm going to just go down a little bit. As you go around the building, there's a set of doors here, okay, which is, that's uh also in the north elevation.
And that's just for egress, and that's just for egress purposes, because I don't see a sidewalk, that's not, that's not meant for day-to-day entering?
That, that's correct, that's just for e- egress, and it's, and and like I said, it's a little more uh uh aesthetic than just the door, because we were breaking up the facade with some jogs. So wherever those doors were, we set them in, and we added a roof to just visually uh break up the elevation so that we can meet the ordinance, the aesthetic uh ordinance of um of how.
Okay, please. So it's doors with steps, and then at the bottom of the steps, there's like a landing?
So um, yes, I guess wherever grading-wise we require steps, uh we would have them. Um but we're showing, we're showing the building jog in, let me, let me zoom in a little more so you could see a little closer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
While Mr. Rudasti is doing that, counsel for our next application, Mammoth Commerce uh contacted me, based upon the hour and where we are with this application. Uh that applicant is asking if they could just briefly address the board so that their their application be carried to another night.
Okay.
So um Well, I I guess, Eileen, we have to stop sharing, screen sharing in order for you to let Ms. Doncher in?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Okay, so we could just let Ms. Doncher in?
And we got Miss, Mr. Spanville in now too, okay.
Okay, Ms. Doncher, if you could just turn your mic and camera on, we can, we can get to you.
You got it. Um well, I guess my first question was, I was asking, it, I think we were told there's a hard stop at ten. And I know that Mr. Papek has another witness after this. If you or the board think that there is a chance of us starting this evening, we will let our other witnesses go. If that is not um likely, then rather than our, we have a number of witnesses we hope to call this evening, then we would ask that we, if we can deal with the adjourn, you know, carrying it now. Um if you think we might be able to start later, then, you know, we'll be.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know that we'll reach you, I don't know how many members of the public there are for the app for uh Mr. Papek's.
I didn't even think of that, correct?
As as well, so, you know, rather than, you know, considering the the time and expense for your client, you know, it might be prudent to carry it. Um, Eileen? What are some?
Our next meeting is November third, which has one application on it and three, two submission waivers and an extension of time. After that, our next meeting is December first with two applications scheduled, and then December fifteenth.
Um My recommendation, um we're, we're still looking at a few other things that may be going on in November as well. What what are the two applications on on December first?
Uh A A S T H W Stavola and a minor subdivision, Benzian Young Greece.
What I would recommend is that we carry to December first, and this be the first app, the first substantive application we hear that night. So, you know, the other applicants can certainly make their decision as to whether they want to keep that night or not. But I think we could clear out, you know, and and provide as much time as is necessary on December first to hear uh this application.
Okay, um if I if I may, um the um I'm trying to get, if you'll give me one minute, I'm trying to have my witnesses respond to anybody.
Sure, 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 I I understand.
Um just give me one second.
Hey, hey, Ron?
Yes.
It
Sorry, yes.
Do you mind if we take a a five-minute uh five-minute break?
Yeah, I think that'd be good, so.
That would be great. And the consultants, thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
It's it's been two hours, so we need a break. So we'll, 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 we'll take a five-minute break and reconvene. Mr. Cattaro, you want to make the announcement?
Uh no, that's, that's the announcement, so that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now reconvene.
Ms. Doncher?
Yes, thank you, um yes, we um, we, we will be able to proceed um with at least our engineer and traffic on twelve-one. Unfortunately, we will not have our architect, but we'll see if um if somebody else from his firm can cover the open items that we need to deal with. Um but at least if we can get through those two, that will be the bulk of the uh the testimony. Um so if the board could announce the carry to December one without further uh notice.
I need an extension of time on the record too, please.
Uh we are agreeable to an extension of time through December two.
Thank you.
Okay, so the application of Mammoth Commerce Center LLC, case number S P dash one-one-zero-zero. Be carried to the boards December first, two thousand twenty-two meeting. It will be a virtual meeting beginning at seven thirty. All instructions on how to access the virtual meeting will be available on the township's website. All documents associated with the application are also available for review and inspection on the township's website. There will be no further notice to property owners, so if you receive the notice for the hearing tonight, you will not receive another one. Again, it is carried to the boards December first, two thousand twenty-two, virtual meeting beginning at seven thirty.
Can I just ask, is it, the the notice tonight, the agenda was for seven?
Well, I'm sorry, seven o'clock, seven o'clock.
Okay, I I didn't know if you were changing it for some reason, or if I had, but I, okay, so it's seven thirty on twelve-one.
Seven, seven o'clock on twelve-one, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will be, I just want to confirm that after your business minutes, whatever, that we can anticipate. I mean, and your waivers, whatever the, the items that we will be the first matter on the agenda that evening.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Are we back, Mr. Chair?
We are.
Okay, there was something that I did not do at the beginning of the night, and just the housekeeping. So we published for the August fourth meeting, and you heard the application on August fourth. And we were carried to August eighteenth, which meeting was canceled. And we were also then carried to September first, and that meeting was canceled. And I was afraid that there wasn't continuity of notice, so we re-noticed and republished for tonight. And I just wanted to place that on the record, I just thought with the virtual meetings and the cancellation of meetings, continuity of notice might have been disrupted, so. Uh and we provided that notice package to Mrs. Urbano prior to the hearing.
And everything was in order.
Oh, thank you.
And just for purposes of the record also, we did place on the uh the township's website, the. And just for purposes of the record also, we did place on the uh, the township's website, the cancellation of those meetings. And the fact that they were being carried to the, to the date certain with all the information. So you're, you're doubly protected.
Okay, belt and suspenders. So I think we're, Mr. Radasti was presenting the floor plan and the doors. Did you conclude that? Did you take us around the, the building with all the man doors, Mr. Radasti?
Um, yeah, look, I'm gonna share. Okay, so we're back to sheet S K one, which is the floor plan and I'm. Zoomed in a little bit here. So this is the. Around the building, I think I was getting a question about these doors that are set in. Uh, and I zoomed in a little more so you could see it, but there's a, a, a central exit door flanked by uh some glass. And it's set into the building three feet and then there's a covered roof that extends out three feet or so from the building. Um, that gives some protection to the door, but these, these doors are for exit purposes. Um, and the reason that they're set in and they look so nice is um in order to comply with the aesthetic requirement of um. Of section one eighty-eight dash two twenty-eight, general non-residential architectural design standards. So, and we did that, if you, if I could slide this. Elevation over, you see, we have this all along the facade. Every uh. Every seventy, seventy-five feet or so, um, and then we wrap around. This elevation to the other office in the corner. So we did that to be consistent aesthetically uh with the building. I'm gonna zoom. Out a little bit so you can get the whole picture.
Mr. O'Dassie, why are you doing that? So you, you met the aesthetics uh of these doors. What about the ADA for these doors? Are there stats? Is there ramp? You know, what are you doing? Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so the building will meet the requirements, American Disability Act requirements. Um, uh, a certain percentage of doors have to meet the ADA. Uh notably, the main entrance into the building and a certain percentage of the other doors of the building. So um, we'll, we'll comply with that.
When you say we'll comply, we spoke about coming out to steps or landing. I, I'm not sure if we saw a sidewalk, so could you specify how you're gonna comply?
Well, the, the. The doors in the front all comply with the sidewalk. Yeah, uh, excuse me, are, are all level with the sidewalk, so there's no step, right, for, for any of these doors at the office areas? And then if you go to the other office areas, these doors also uh meet the requirements for the sidewalk. The other doors are um, uh, fire exit only, so um. You know, we'll, we'll comply with whatever the code requires for those doors.
But I'm, I'm not understanding just that little statement. So somebody who has to use. One of those emergency doors for ADA, and I don't know all the rules. I thought all the doors have to be ADA. Uh, but I could be wrong on that one. Wha- wha- what are you, what are you gonna do? Because I'm wondering if, um, this, and this came up with the chairman before about the sidewalks around the building. So somebody who's ADA, how do you get them around the building if there's no sidewalks?
Okay, so, so these doors are for fire purposes only? So these doors are only for exiting the building, not enter, entering the building. You know, sidewalks are not required for those doors, right? There would be a, just a concrete pad at the bottom of the steps.
And that meets ADA, like I, I, I'm in a wheelchair, God forbid, and I gotta get out. I just go to the landing and that's it? That meets the requirement of ADA?
Um, yes, I mean, the, the, the office areas, these would be a hundred percent ADA compliant, the doors.
Yeah, but the fire, the fire, the fire prevents me from getting to those doors.
Right.
There's a fire and I can't get to those doors in the front. I'm in the back of the building. Worst case scenario. What's, I don't know the ADA rules, you, you know, you tell me.
Right, they're, they're going to comply with the percentage of doors that are required to meet the ADA. I mean, that's, I mean. That, that's what I could tell you at this time. I don't have the exact grade difference right here, so I couldn't give you um the exact. You know, if there's gonna be any steps or not, but I could, I could determine that and, and get you that answer.
So, so the question is, Mr. Pape. Would you recommend that, you, you have any other witnesses that you'd like to bring, bring up?
We do have Mr. Kennel, yes.
Okay, why don't we table this? Let your professional do his homework. Listen, listen to some of your other uh, uh professionals. If we have time by the end of the night, he can come back and respond to Mr. Nacastro's question.
I think that's very efficient. If I may, Mr. Chairman, other than the topic of, of ADA compliance, Mr. Radasti. Is there any, oh, actually, if I might, Mr. Chairman. Um, we did spend considerable time with Ms. Beam with the architecture. And would it be acceptable to ask Ms. Bell if the architectural facade does meet with Ms. Beam's approval?
Yes, the uh, our, we're fine with the architecture. Um, you know, you worked with us. We appreciate that. Uh, it's a warehouse building, but you have added some um architectural interest to it, um, to make it more attractive.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions. So, Mr. Pape, does that wrap up your?
I just wanted, Mr., and I wanted, Mr. Radasti to confirm that the facade, any facade signage other than numerals for safety purposes have been removed from the design of the building.
Uh, that is correct. So there's currently two signs shown on the building, but we're going to remove those. Uh, the, the only remaining signs that we're going to keep is that uh, this, this upper corner, we have these street address numeral. Uh, I believe at a thirty inch high uh, non-illuminated numeral in this upper corner.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Radasti, I think that concludes direct examination. Is there anything further that you feel hasn't been placed on the record?
Uh, the, the only other thing is that the building is designed to meet uh green, green features to the building. Um, so there's a lot of green features such as the building be constructed of, of concrete. Uh, which produces less material waste than conventional uh C M U construction. Um, exterior walls will be constructed of concrete sandwich panels. Uh, the panels include an inner core of continuous insulation, which has little to no thermal bridging. Uh, that's common in, in uh conventional types of construction like block. Uh, so it creates a more energy efficient building envelope. Um, we're also going to have um. Uh, some recycled uh materials. Uh, we're also gonna have low E thermally, low E thermally broken glazing. Uh, which will be utilized to reduce heat gain, energy loss, well, the energy efficient H V A C systems. Uh, and energy efficient L E D lighting with occupancy sensors.
Could you confirm that the roof will be designed to handle the load of solar panels in the event that any tenant chooses to put solar panels on the roof?
Uh, that is correct. We, we'll uh design for possible future solar.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have nothing further of Mr. Radasti.
Okay.
We should examine him at this time. He's yours.
Thank you. Be, before I have a bunch of questions to ask and see. Like, does anybody from the board have any other questions for the architect? Okay. Seeing none. Uh, roof drainage, could you give me an idea of what you're proposing for roof drainage? Are we doing scuppers on the outside, gutter system, interior drains? What's the, what's the proposed? I can't ascertain that from your elevations.
Sure, so, so uh the building would have, have parapet, so there would be a, a low slope roof, possibly um, uh, an E P, E P D M roof. Or a um, a T P L roof. So basically a mem, a membrane style roof. You'd have a shallow.
What color?
Uh, it would be a white color, a quarter inch per foot uh pitch.
Thank you.
Um, which, which meets the international building code requirements. Um, and then there will be uh. Interior roof drains uh with downspouts that would connect to the storm.
So you won't see any, any leaders of any sort on the outside of the building?
That is correct.
Uh, what about a secondary gutter, uh, secondary scuppers through the parapet, or will you handle the secondary drain requirements on the interior as well?
Uh, yes, there'll probably be high and low uh drains. Um, so a roof drain and then another drain next to it that's slightly higher. Uh, which, which acts as an overflow drain.
Okay, so no scuppers. Mr. Cuchero, could you please make sure that that's um in the record? Roof will be drained from interior drains. There's no exterior scupper or downspouts.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. H V A C screening, I believe was in Ms. Bell's uh, uh, Jim Bean's report. Or it was Laura's report that indicated uh, uh, concern about H V A C screening. Could you please provide some testimony to that?
Uh, yes, so, so um, the warehouse itself will, will not be air conditioned. It'll be heated with internal heaters. Uh, the offices would be air conditioned. Um, uh, any A C unit uh for the office areas would be uh, would be screened.
Okay. And how do we define the screening? The, Mr. Cuchero, legally, how do we, how do we deal with that? Like, is there a certain amount of distance from the building that we make sure that we can't see the H V A C, or is it just anywhere? We, we can't see the H V A C units?
Uh, the, I think the intent of the ordinance is. Uh, that screening means you just can't see it. So whether you're right on top of the building or whether you're farther away from the building, you know, it really shouldn't matter. The screening should be adequate so that. You know, you're seeing the screening and not, not the HVAC unit.
Okay, do you think it would be prudent for the board to see in the elevation and. And maybe even have a, a cut sheet appropriate for what that screening may end up looking like?
I, I think if it's something, it could be handled different ways, but again, you know, when you're granting, and I say this all the time. If, if the board is granting preliminary and final, they're not gonna see it. So if you have an interest in seeing what it looks like. Then, you know, that's something you should make them put in the plans that you get an opportunity to see before there's an action, if you're comfortable. Um. You know, making it a condition of approval, you can do that, but just understand you will not see it again.
Yes, let me ask this question then, Mr. Radasti. It, it, the parapet that you're proposing, uh, because you, you mentioned that the building's total height is forty-five feet, but the interior is only forty feet. How tall do you anticipate the actual parapet to be? Are we talking a couple of feet here? Are we talking a couple of inches? What are, what are you anticipating it?
Yeah, the, the, the parapet's going to vary some. It's going to vary um, probably from uh, along the lines from a foot to three feet. Uh, in height. Um, and we could, we could set uh the H V A C units back farther and we could have. Um, a decorative screening panel on top of the roof that covers these um. Uh, H V A C units so they're not seen. I mean, granted, they're not going to be very big. It's, it's serving a small, uh, a small office area and it would be. You know, multiple small units.
Yeah, my, 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 my biggest concern was the fact that you may need a secondary screening device in order to hide them. And the board hasn't had an opportunity to see what that looks like.
Right, so um, well, I could either uh. I don't want to take away from the clear height in the warehouse unless. Unless that's something the client would like, but I, so otherwise I would propose. Um. You know, having a secondary screen device. We, we've used that on many projects before and we can make it look um as good as the sound material on the building.
Well, well, let's, let's put that as a footnote and see if anybody else on the board thinks that it may be uh best, or our professionals think it may be best to see, see what that screening may end up looking like. Um, in order to move this forward or not. Uh, windows, the windows in the front. Uh, I, I've seen other warehouses where uh the ceiling, the ceiling gets set. Later on for that particular space. And then all the mechanicals end up being above the ceiling and they don't properly blackout. The, the windows that are above that ceiling area and you end up seeing all the mechanicals from the outside. Uh, are you proposing any type of specification or requirement that the windows that are above the proposed ceiling would be blacked out to hide those, those mechanicals?
Um, no, we could definitely do that. We could, we can make sure that there's no mechanical seen through the windows, that they would either be opaque. Um, opaque panels. Um. Um, so, so that you couldn't see through them, correct?
Uh, I, I'll leave it up to you, however you black it out. Sometimes I've seen it where it's, it's something that a film that gets added to the inside to, to, to create that blackout once you know where the final ceiling height ends up. In those areas.
No, I think that's a good idea. I've seen plenty of buildings where that's uh, where you could see the H V C and I definitely wouldn't want that in one of my buildings.
You, Mr. Pape, do you think that that's acceptable?
I do. I, I, um, I think it's an, an excellent idea. I've, I've seen Mr. Radasti incorporate that into buildings previously.
Mr. Cuchero, could you just make sure that's in the resolution, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair.
Um, the energy efficiency of the H V A C. Um, it is my understanding that the building codes just changed and therefore energy efficiencies have changed. Um. How, how, you, you may, you may comment that the energy, the H V A C system will be energy efficient. How do we as the board? Um. Make sure that that continues forward. As the building progresses. Is there something in the resolution more specific than just saying they're energy efficient? Is there an energy efficiency level that should be met? To give it a green character?
Right, I mean, we're um, you, you're right, the, the building codes uh currently we're in the grace period between. The uh current energy code and the new energy, uh, the new codes that were just passed. Um, so we will comply with the uh, the new energy codes um to be efficient.
Okay. And then. My last question is utilities. Um. We don't seem to get, especially for these larger buildings that may require larger electrical services and gas services. We don't seem to get a good idea in the architectural elevations and renderings. Of exactly what the utilities will end up looking like and how those get appropriately screened. And um, I'll, I'll use the example of the uh, uh, storage facility on Route nine, just, just north of Twin Ponds Road. You know, we didn't see a nice elevation. The building gets built and then we end up with this giant ugly electrical service in the front of the building. The H V A C unit ended up in the front of the building and they even ran the, the uh, the cut, uh, the refrigerant lines for the condensers. Up the side of the building and put an ugly gutter-like cover on top of it. And, and I'm, I, I, I'm asking this question because. Uh, you, you've spent a lot of time trying to provide a lot of architectural elements and you really don't have a good idea what the utilities would look like. Is there any testimony you could provide to that? Have you thought about that? It's gonna be an internal utility room of some sort. Will that be allowed by the utilities? Is there extra bushes or other screening that's going to be, be placed so that the utilities can't be seen from the roadway?
Right, I, I, I would think that, sort of the floor plan here. Um. I would think. So I, I don't have um the answer to exactly, you know, um. The utilities, where they would be on the building, but I, what I would like to say is that we would, we are going to screen them either with landscaping. Um, we have minimal holes in the building. We definitely are not going to run them up and down the facade, exposed conduit and things like that. Um.
You know, if the utility, I'm sorry, I didn't pay attention to the utility plan. Do you know if this civil engineer had. Had provided in their utility plans, locations of where those utilities were proposed to come in at? And, and if you did, could you, could you uh provide testimony of, of where they'd be on your floor plan here that you show on a?
Right, um, I would.
And if you don't, if you don't, that could be part of the ADA comeback.
Yeah, I.
Right.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, I can tell you that the, the um J, J C P and L will. Provide the applicant with the location of their, their, their boxes. We, we don't get to tell them where they're going to put them. What we can tell the board though is that we are prepared to screen them. With a combination of, of fencing and landscaping so that they're not visible, but J C P and L will tell us where they go.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody else in the board have any other further questions before we? Does anybody else in the board have any other further questions before we let this professional go and do his research on the ADA to ask Mr. Nacastros, answer Mr. Nacastro's question? None? Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I know that, that you just were inquiring of board members. I have a question to Mr. Radasi that I think might be, might provide some enlightenment. The HVAC systems that we're talking about now, is it my understanding that they would be confined to the two office corners of the building? And that the heating system for the warehouse portion is internal?
That is correct.
So the two corners that have the offices are the areas where HVAC systems would have to be screened?
Let me ask, let me ask a follow-up question then, Mr. Pape.
Surely.
Will the warehouse be ventilated?
Yes, it will. That, that, that is required by the, the building code, correct?
Right, and so, so, um, you know, what is that mechanical ventilation going to look like on the roof? I'm assuming it's going through the roof and not out any of the, the sidewalls?
Well, it would be, uh, so that ventilation system would be in the building, right? And then there would just be, um, there would either be louvers on the exterior of the building or a duct coming through the roof.
So, so be careful with the exterior, um, because you didn't show them in your plans. And if they're going on the roof, we need, gonna need that to be part of your screening analysis.
Uh, correct, but typically the, the ventilation unit would be inside the building and it just protrudes through the roof so that the, the air goes through the roof. But the, the, the unit itself would be inside the building.
That's correct, but that, that whatever that device is that's above the roof to allow that fresh air to come in and out is going to need to be part of the screening. Part of the mechanic, I believe mechanical, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cuchero, but the mechanical screening requirement is not limited to just say, uh, HVAC unit that creates the coal and it's, it's all, all mechanical equipment.
I believe it's all mechanical, but I think Christine and Laura probably are a little bit more familiar with it.
I believe it's all mechanical.
Yes, we, we will screen, um, anything on the roof.
The V and the HVAC is ventilation, so, you know, it should be included.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pape.
Sure, Mr. Radasi, if you could, while we're working with, um, Mr. Kennel, do you have the opportunity to explore what the ADA requirement would be for the actual number of doors? The percentage of the doors?
Um, I, I, uh, I have to look that up while, while I'm on break with the percentages, but I.
That's our request.
I believe it's only, yes, I believe it's fifty percent, but I have to just confirm that.
Okay, and if you could have the section, the ADA section, and thank you.
Thank you.
Then, Mr. Chair, with permission, Mr. Scott Kennel is our traffic expert. And if we could have Mr. Kennel's sworn.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Where'd he go?
Yeah.
Oh, hold, hold on, he must've got bounced out.
Mr. Kennel, are you able to come back in?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay. I thought, I had saw a network failure on my end, so I have to go onto the phone then.
No problem. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spill your name for the record.
Scott Kennel, K E N N E L, with McDonough and Ray Associates located at fourteen thirty-one Lakewood Road, Manasquan.
Mr. Kennel, please share with the board your professional background.
Sure, I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates. I have over thirty-five years of traffic and transportation planning experience throughout New Jersey. I have prepared, uh, in excess of two thousand traffic impact studies. I've appeared on over two thousand site plan applications. I've been qualified by this board as well as the Hallow zoning board on a number of occasions. And I've also been qualified as a traffic expert in the New Jersey Superior Court on four land use matters.
Thank you, we'll accept your predictions, Mr. Kennel.
Thank you.
Ask if you would confirm that you were part of the design of the site from day one?
Yes, myself and my, my firm has been involved with this project.
And a couple of easy questions. I know that at times that this board has expressed concern with an applicant over parking a site. And we wanted to make sure that we didn't either overparked or underparked. Could you confirm that the thirty-six parking stalls that Mr. Strong identified on the plan is compliant with the ordinance?
Yes, based on my review of the plans and the township reports, the thirty-six spaces comply with the township ordinance.
And perhaps if Peter Strong, if you could, what, would, would you like a turning template plan or the site plan to, as you continue your testimony?
I, I would, I think the, the colored, uh, site plan is, be my preference.
Very fine. Mr. Strong, can you screen share and bring that up? Could we zoom in just a little bit? Hmm, that's a little too much, we need to see the driveways. So with the plan that's before us, Mr. Kennel, if you could, gotta go back out just a little bit, Peter. Let's stay right there. With the plan that is before us, could you describe the two points of ingress and egress to the site? And then I'm going to ask if you could comment on their adequacy to provide safe ingress and egress by vehicles to the site?
Yes, I mean, as this, as the plan depicts, there are two driveways servicing the new building. The westernmost driveway, uh, currently exists and serves that the, the Janico building and will provide, uh, access for trucks as well as primary access for the, uh, twenty-one spa, parking, parking stalls that we have on the south side of, of the, uh, of, of the proposed building. So, uh, as we, as was stated earlier, we have a, I'll say a loading dock courtyard that the loading docks face the, uh, each other, the existing buildings to the proposed building. And then as we move further north, there is another area of parking where we have fifteen parking spaces. And they will have access to and from an industrial court to the more northerly side. Um, so both parking areas have direct access to industrial court without having to go through the, um, loading area courtyard.
And with regard to the loading area courtyard, there, there were some concerns that were brought to the, by Ms. Newman and board members as to whether that area will adequately and safely function with vehicles, um, in the loading docks for the new building and vehicles in the loading docks for the existing building. I know that the loading docks for the existing building and ha- have been used for, and for many years without issue. If you could describe for your, from your professional posi- position, your opinion as to the adequacy of this design for the continued use of those loading docks?
Yes, um, it's my expert opinion that the loading courtyard where we have a hundred and ninety feet between the two buildings is adequate to accommodate, uh, tractor trailers for the new building as well as for the proposed building. We delineate, or it's delineated in the plan, is a drive aisle that bisects the two loading areas, uh, to accommodate traffic movement through that area.
Are you comfortable that there is adequate room for the staging of tractor trailers on both buildings and their maneuvering in that area?
Yes, I do. I mean, this design of a hundred and ninety feet is commonplace in many other warehouse developments that I've worked on.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to see that as an exhibit, um, or as at least a rendering. What, what they're showing, they show the tractor trailers on the one side on lot four. I think the same vehicle should be mirrored and we should be able to see that the turning movements there are safe and that at no point is it obstructed. I'm assuming for that tractor trailer to back in on lot four, it's going to need space from the adjoining lot to do so. So I, I recommend that that information be provided.
Well, isn't that some, you, you had brought that up earlier in your testimony that you had been asking for something like that? Is that, is that true?
That's correct.
And Mr. Chairman, that was what I was alluding to, the way for this point. I mean, we, we've seen this before and there's been problems in other sites similar to this. And also, uh, Scott, the, the vehicles, the, the passenger vehicles, they also have to exit into that same lane, that shared lane that the tractor trailers are going in right in the middle.
That's the one closest to the fifteen parking spaces, yes.
Correct, yes, sir.
Uh, and again, to Laura's point, it's, as I look at this plan, the, the Janico building, I, I've, I've observed many tractor trailers on the southerly end or to the, to the right side. You know, again, it may be a situation where towards the left side, you may have to just, it may be limited to box trucks because we could do pinch down in that area. But where the proposed loading docks are directly opposite the Janico, uh, loading docks, where the hundred and ninety feet is adequate to accommodate truck movements in and out of those loading bays.
Scott, how do you control, how do you control parking spaces to limit it to box trucks?
I've, I've had this happen on, on other applications and, and because of the site constraints, it's, 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 uh, regulated by the operators. I mean, again, we, we have other points of access that it's not, you know, again, because we have this loading courtyard, but we have means of access for the passenger vehicles without going through that, I'll say the, the courtyard. That's where my opinion that this plan would work.
Okay, but here's, here's another argument. We have industrial court, the road network not completed. When he completes it, you don't know if he's going to have any issues, which has been discussed in the past, but anyway, they still all circulate out of one egress and e, and ingress at the lower right-hand corner where your two arrows are.
Well, they, well, they go, they access.
To get onto Vanderveer, that's where they got to leave from.
Mr. Nacastro, can we get clarification on that? Because I thought I heard testimony from the, Mr. Pape and, and their, their civil engineer that they, this application, this building couldn't move forward until they finished the industrial court.
I'll give you that, but how does that affect the circulation plan? You still only have one ingress and egress going out to Vanderveer. You added another building with another thirteen tractor trailers coming on. You've had this issue on other applications. And we haven't been able to show that it's a safe movement of an, and a circulation. They're all sharing the court. Now we're talking about only limiting to box trucks. How can we vote on something that we haven't seen other than this one rendering?
Well, again, as, as the chairman stated, we're going to have industrial court will be completed out to Vanderveer. So there'll be two points of access to Vanderveer Road serving not only the existing buildings, but the proposed buildings that'll be coming online.
Say that again, Mr. I, I'm sorry. Industrial court ends, ends where? And that, and this.
Basically at the Janico, existing Janico driveway around the bend on the north end. But as part of the subdivision approval and based on what Mr. Pape's representation was earlier, industrial court will be, uh, completed to, to have the U-shaped roadway, so they have two connections to Vanderveer Road before this building is occupied.
Do we have a rendering of that?
The two connections to industrial court, two connections to industrial court.
Well, and also two connections to Vanderveer Road, too.
So where is that show?
Yes.
That's on, it's on, it's on the key map because that was part of the subdivision that was previously approved.
It's on the key map, do we have the key map? This is the key map.
There you go.
Well, well, that's a subdivision plan, I think.
Subdivision plan. Where, if you could identify with the mouse, which is our lot, Mr. Strong? Is it, you controlling the mouse? If you could identify which lot we're presenting to the board this evening.
She got. Mr. Nacastro, or actually, Mr. Cuchero or Laura, one or the other? When there's a subdivision that's being developed, right? And we approve a subdivision. And the subdivision improvements aren't completed before we see the next project that's going to take advantage of that subdivision. Does that put the board in a quandary? I mean, there, there was testimony, Mr. Kennel just stated that there, there, the, that the building wouldn't be occupied until the loop got finished. I'm just wondering about the legality of the building even being able to get started before the subdivision improvements are completed.
Is there? Well, I, I think one of the issues, and, and I asked Mr. Pape this, um, this application, is it my understanding that it's relying upon the, some of the improvements that were approved as part of the subdivision?
If I may, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Cuchero, this site plan would only be constructed when all other outside agency approvals are in place. Those are the standard and the subdivision has been perfected. Perfection of the subdivision requires the posting of the inspection fees and the cash guarantees and addressing all the concerns of the township engineer so that the maps can be signed. When that map is filed, the lot that we're showing you is created. And as long as there are bonds for the improvements, we're permitted to pull a building permit, we cannot occupy it unless the improvements have been installed. And that is the commitment that's being made, that all of the improvements will be installed prior to requesting a certificate of occupancy.
So that was my, so that was my question is, because right now legally the lot doesn't exist because the improvements haven't been completed.
Well, the lot doesn't exist because the map has not been filed.
Right, and the map can't be filed until the improvements are completed.
No, 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 the map is filed before any improvements are installed. The map is filed, the bonds are posted.
Gotcha, okay, okay, so.
That, we're going to file the map in the next month or so, we're, we're, we're at that stage.
Gotcha, okay.
And then, and then there's bonding with the held by the town that guarantees that the improvements will be installed and there's a commitment to make all those improvements.
Is industrial court a, uh, public roadway?
Industrial court is a public roadway, correct. It, well, it will be when it's complete, it'll be, you know, when it's dedicated.
Laura, what does that mean it is a public roadway? Who, who maintains that road, the, the app, the, the landowner, no?
No, ultimately it would be dedicated to the township of Powell.
Why, when it's only accessing the, the, the industrial park?
Mr., the, 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 the planning board approved it as a, as industrial court as a public road.
Back, back then?
Two thousand twenty.
Well, the governing body had, I mean, either it was a, a public road that was identified on our official map, whether it be paper or not, or the governing body would have to accept it. We, we couldn't compel the, the governing body to accept it.
And there's traffic, there's, there's traffic, there's, um, streetlights on this roadway?
Let me see if I have that.
Let me see if I have that map. I don't have the construction drawings for the subdivision. Um, but. So so I can't answer that question. The 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 road design. Drainage design, the road design were all part of that which was reviewed and approved first by the board and then by the township engineer. I I but I do not know if I do not know what the lighting plan is. If I may continue with my questioning of Mister Kennel or are there further questions from the board?
Please continue.
Thank you. If you could confirm that the driveway designs include the appropriate and adequate site triangles. To assure that they will function safely.
That is correct. Based on my review of the plans and conducting site visits. Uh, will have adequate sight lines.
Could we bring the rendering back up, Mister Strong? And Mister Kennel, with the two driveways, each one providing access to one of the. The the car parking lots. Are you able to confirm that there are no conflicting mo- movements on the site?
That is my opinion, yes. The the car parking areas have been segregated and they have. Their own direct access to industrial court without having to go through the loading bay courtyard.
So can I ask, I have a question. So. They don't have to go through the courtyard, but they have the ability to, right?
They do.
So to me, that just looks like chaos. You've got you've got tractor trailers coming back and forth through there. And the possibility of, I mean, there's a lot of cars that could be parked in this area. So wouldn't you want to? Kind of stop those cars from going through that area?
Well, again, the the they're basically gonna be employee parking, so obviously that can be instilled upon those employees by the operators. I mean, this isn't, this you're not gonna have transient type of activity as say a retail use where people are unfamiliar with it. So they're gonna be educated and that is something that uh. Uh, could be imparted upon them by their employer.
And by signage.
But we know, we 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 know we can't control control stupidity. And and signage and all that stuff. We we gotta design something that is 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 safe without. Signage, without people being told by the employee. And 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 none of this, this, none of this shows that. This is very similar to a lot of. Show where the other egress is on on industrial. It just shows like one loop.
There's.
I don't know.
There's.
I said my piece.
There's two p- there's two driveways onto industrial. They're there now. The industrial building that is there now has this very similar situation where cars. Can circulate around the building. They can go through where the truck areas are. There's no prohibition. It hasn't created an issue. We can certainly put signage that says. No automobile vehicles beyond this point, but I don't think it's necessary. I think that. People will. Will drive their cars to the parking lot that is most convenient for them. And is I think there's any reason to think that someone's gonna intentionally go through the. The truck area when they have a clear path. Already provide for them, but. We're we're all talking about human behavior from our own perspective. My understanding that your the the request from Ms. Newman was that we provide an exhibit that shows the tractor trailers. In place and turning templates for the vehicles. For vehicle, for the trucks on both buildings. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Ms. Newman, is that what you were looking for?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And. Um. This, while we are, while we are presenting to you. One of our clients found the plan. That was approved. The subdivision plan that was approved, and there is a JCPN L lighting plan associated with that roadway. So yes. Mister Nikaster, there is a lighting plan that's part of the overall subdivision. I have nothing further on direct of Mister Kennel. He has addressed the issues that we've asked him to. He remains available to the board for examination.
I have a couple of questions. So what I really didn't hear anything about what you studied as part of. Um. Your review. Did you do a traffic review or a traffic report?
Yes, there was a comprehensive traffic report dated November seventeen, twenty twenty one that was submitted as part of this application. And as part of that, we had conducted traffic counts along Vanderveil Road, along Howell Road, and also along Adelphia Road. And. We did an analysis of Vanderveil Road at industrial court. And determined that it'd be a level service B for both the morning and afternoon peak hours. At Adelphia Road. You would have a level service. Vanderveil Road and Adelphia Road, we have a level service B in the morning and a level service C in the afternoon. And then at the intersection of Howell Road and Vanderveil Road. We projected a level service B for both the morning and afternoon peak hours. And as far as our assignments, it's expected that. For all intents and purposes, the trucks would be oriented towards the how, towards Howell Road. Uh, I know we have that geometry at Howell and Vanderveil Road that's skewed. But based on the the traffic patterns expected from this site. That alignment is conducive to uh truck movements.
And again, we posed it and I maybe it's just a difference of opinion, but we had a comment in our report. Um, about conflicts with passenger vehicles driving through the truck court on proposed lot four to access your parking area. And it is your professional opinion that this is a safe design?
Well, again, we have this site is laid out where. Access to the. Parking courtyard or parking area of twenty one spaces on the. South side of the building. Can have direct access without going through the loading, the loading dock area. And then you have the other fifteen parking spaces in the northwest quadrant of the building. Where they have direct access to industrial court without having to go through the loading dock area. So that's. In my opinion. Uh, expert opinion. This can function safely. And efficiently, and also taking into consideration that. These are employees. And it's. Limited turnover. It's not at the commercial use where you have high turnovers or you have people that are unfamiliar with the. Traffic operations or traffic movement. Um, so for all those reasons, it's my opinion that this site can function efficiently and safely.
Are these lots gonna be merged or is that gonna happen through easement?
Easement.
So there's gonna be separate owners of lot four and lot two?
Correct.
And that does not change your traffic testimony that we're gonna put employees of lot four and have them going through lot two?
Change.
No.
There's no, there's no restrictions as as far as I understand.
There's there'll be cross access easements through through throughout.
Think what Miss Newman saying is, is since they're not the same owner, Miss Newman, correct me if I'm wrong. I think what you're trying to say is because they're not the same owner, they're not gonna be under the same training scenario. Potentially.
Correct, and there's also a heavy reliance upon both of these lots, even just for tractor trailers to get in and out. So. I would definitely like to see that. I'm unaware if that creates any conflicts. I'm also not sure how the circulation pattern is gonna be made so that you're pushing people. To go through. What it sounds like is you're trying to get the vehicles to go through. What I'm gonna call the access to the bottom of this page if they wanna park on the site unless they are going to that front front office.
And I would expect that that lower driveway, say at the bottom of the page. That would be utilized by the trucks that are you going to the Janico building. And then to enter because you would. Come around that southerly end of the building and the natural. Movement for trucks is to back. In a clockwise position. So the 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 guy in the cab can see the trailer going to the dock. Whereas for the new building, they would enter into the driveway on the left so that they could accomplish that. Uh, you know, typical maneuver to the loading dock.
So now, how many trucks go to Janico a day? Because what I previously heard was that that was really where the passenger vehicles were gonna go out. Now, they're still gonna be, um. I don't wanna say conflicting, but they're still gonna be now traveling with tractor trailers as they're going to Janico.
I don't know what on a daily basis, but the 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 multiple times I've been out there, I've seen anywhere from two to three. Tractor trailers on the Janico site. But I can't tell you what that means on a daily basis.
So Mister Chairman, not knowing the number of vehicles that are gonna be coming in from that entrance point, we really don't know the conflicts. I I don't know how respectfully, Mister Kennel, you can tell me that that's gonna function safe. When we're adding additional vehicles there and we don't know the number of tractor trailers that are coming in and out. I just can't tell from this plan. The nature of potential conflicts that there are.
Hey, well, they they they, if you stated your note, it sounds like they've got to come back and provide you the circulation plan. So what what other things would you like them to check up on?
Just while we're on that, though, Mister Chairman, before we leave the the easement. Are there other, any other elements of the easement or is it limited solely to uh? To access? Is are there any rights that the two different properties have to park on either of the lots?
Our intention is to have cross access and cross parking in place so that the it can function as a campus without restriction.
Mister Kennel, when you analyzed the traffic, did you include Janico?
Yes, we included Janico and I also during the times our counter being conducted. The building, I think it's lot one. On the north side of industrial court was being constructed and we surcharge traffic. That would be generated from that site in consideration for in our analysis. And then as we come in with the future sites, we'll be layering that traffic on as as we move forward.
So other than what I described earlier, Ms. Newman. Are there any other exhibits or that you would like the applicant to produce before returning?
I just have a question, Mister Pape, if possible, for Mister Kennel. Because he and I hold him in high regard because he's testified in how many times? So. Is it your testimony that the fifteen spots in the lower? West portion of the new building where the parking is gonna be for the cars? Is the safest, even though you said many times that it's not gonna go through the court of the of the loading docks? Is that the safest place to put that? Compared to the west side of the building, the side of the building? So that the cars don't have to go into the. Access of the truck to tractor trailers in and out of there?
Well, again, we have with the potential for two tenants and where the office. Space is located. That's to be compliant with the ordinance it and just for the board's benefit. There was an earlier plan where we had parking along between the building and industrial port. But your ordinance.
Can you, oh, you can't move your mouse? I'm not sure where um. You're talking about.
Maybe Peter, Peter can.
Mister Nikaster, we had a parking lot design that was at the end of the building, between the building and industrial. And that parking lot design could exist and it would have the safety features that you're identifying, but it's in the front yard of the building. And the Howell ordinance doesn't permit. The the way the parking is shown on the existing building is no longer a permitted parking scheme. So we we couldn't have the parking.
With without without a variance or waiver.
Correct.
I I can't, and and I I respect that. But sometimes ordinances don't fit all one size. And that's why we have this mechanism in place. So I'm just curious. Where the other, where your original plan was from a safety standpoint of where those cars should have been parked, if you could do it with the mouse.
Sure. It's. I I'll describe it while Peter puts the mouse, but there you go. It was the parking was right there.
And and Scott would agree, would he, is he testifying in his opinion that was a safer place than where they are now or?
Well, it it's a better segregation from where they are now, but again. Where this courtyard with those fifteen spaces. That their access is only fifty to seventy five feet from industrial court, so. They're not in direct conflict with. Um. The loading activity in my.
I understand that they there ain't direct conflict and haven't used that share lane in the middle.
Yeah.
Well.
Mister Kennel, the real simple question is, in your opinion, is the original design that requires a variance or waiver a safer design?
Being able to better segregate from the loading area? Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Mister Nikaster, if directed to do so and knowing that variance relief would be required, we would be, we'd have no issue at all. Introduce.
I I think that's something that should be consensus of the board. I don't wanna speak. Listen, I'm about safety. I I so. You know, I understand ordinances when we when we create them, like I said, one size doesn't fit all. And that's why we have this mechanism. So if the board feels that they would like it in a safer area and and give that relief, then. That's a board decision.
Yeah.
But the testimony I wanted to hear was what's safer?
Yep.
Considering this testimony that's safer, if you want my opinion, I I can't, I can't approve what I see here when someone tells me something is safer. So I think you got your answer, Mister Pape.
Okay, Mister Chairman, Mister Castro, if as we get close to the witching hour, could we pull the board to see if it is the board board's general pleasure to come in with a parking lot that requires?
We can do a straw poll if you'd like.
That would be very nice.
Mister Vano?
Yes.
Been a while since we've done one of these things. I think you just call, I think you just call everybody. For a straw poll.
Well, yeah, you you can do it yourself, Mister Chair, just as the uh. As as the chair, if you want as well, just, you know, we've heard, we've heard Mister Pape's request, just go one by one as to. Whether you would like that information to be depicted or not.
Mister Cristiano?
Yes.
Mister Seaman?
I actually have a question before I answer that. If the parking is moved. Over closer to industrial court on the side. How are the vehicles accessing that parking lot? Is it just open to? Direct pull in from industrial court?
No, as I recall the plan, we would have a. A connection to the driveway to get to the loading, to loading bays. So basically. On the plan, the the driveway, the driving connection to the parking. Area would be shifted. Thirty, forty feet closer to industrial court.
The separate driveway.
Yeah, I I think it's worth seeing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Huster?
I I think Greenfield said uh said it best. Um, you know, I I second his concern and everything, so yes.
Hey, Mister Spandau?
Yes.
Mister Galente?
Yes.
Mister Gerardo?
Yes.
Okay, Mister Greenfield?
Yes.
And Mister Nikaster?
Yes.
Okay, there's your answer.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
With that being said, Mister Chairman, as Mister Pape said, we're 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 at our hard stop time. Considering the work to be done and our professionals have to take a look at it and analyze it with um. Mohammed Commerce being first on the agenda on December first. We have December fifteenth after that, Eileen, is that?
Yes.
I I would say let's put this on December fifteenth and make this first on the agenda for that night. So provides enough time for the revised plan and. And they're first and, and, you know, I, I think it'll be a much, um, shorter hearing on, on that night.
And if we're also seeing them, you know, I'd like to see some data on the screening.
Sure.
Proposed screening for the HVAC and I, I know now you guys gave us some feedback on the fire protection, but this is a pretty tall, tall building. I would feel a lot more comfortable if you had gotten a letter from a, a licensed fire protection engineer that they feel the, the water service is going to be adequate for the proposed fire suppression system. And that, that storage tanks and so forth will not be required.
Got it.
And I guess the sidewalk, put a note in your notes, Mr. Pape will bring the sidewalk up at the end after everybody goes through all the testimonies. So we don't lose track of that. Um, and then of course the ADA.
Yes, and, and it's ten o'clock, but Mr. Rudasty is ready to go. We'll, we'll put it on when we're back. Not to be, I want to be grateful that you gave us the entire evening and I appreciate that you gave us the fifteenth. We could be ready to be back here on your, your meeting of November third. And the only application that's on there is.
I, I, I just don't think, I think I understand the request. But based upon some of the characteristics of those applications, I, I, I just want to be able to give you the whole night again. Um, I'm not sure when we would be reaching you that night.
Mr. Cuchero, on, on the third, the only application that's on right now is, is an application that is our offices. It's ninety six and.
Mr. Chairman, so the, the applicant objects to the fifteenth. So it's.
Not object, not at all objecting. I, I don't ever fight with you guys. I, I, I'm just, we, we could be ready on the third and I think you might have an empty night. Um, because we're not ready to go forward with ninety six. That plan's not ready.
Well, we still need the board's professionals to have adequate time to look at whatever you guys are putting together to, to opine and.
And it, and it may, and it may with the extra turning stuff, it may also open up a, a, a requirement to go back to our, um, fire chief and have him take another look at it for those extra turning radiuses when he sees what's actually coming out of the existing building. It may, may give him some additional input.
I'm glad that we had the discussion. I appreciate the answer that you're giving to us. We accept it and respect it.
Now, before we go, I think Nick said that, that, uh, you don't need to see the environmental commission. Nick, is that true?
That is true.
You're good? Okay, shade tree, do you?
Well, now that they're compliant with the, uh, tree replacement, the, what the shade tree was seeking to see is no longer relevant.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you. But I, we, we will absolutely go see fire chief again before we're back here.
Okay. All right, so then the.
It's an extension of time on the record.
Early. An extension of time is granted to the board to complete their deliberations and take formal action through December thirty one, two thousand twenty two. I will follow it with a letter to Ms. Rabano for the file. And this evening, we had a court reporter present transcribing the entire hearing. We'll have that transcribed and delivered to the board members through Eileen and to Mr., Mr. Cuciaro.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Okay, so the application of ninety industrial court LLC S, case number SP dash one zero nine eight be carried to the boards December fifteen, two thousand twenty two meeting, which is a virtual remote meeting beginning at seven o'clock. The instructions on how to access the meeting will be available on the township's website. All documents associated with this application will also be available on the township's website uh, for review and inspection. There'll be no further notice to property owners. So if you received a notice of tonight's meeting, you will not receive another one for December fifteenth.
To all, thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, master plan subcommittee update? Hey, Rob, you're muted.
Yeah, I, I thought I heard that there was an approval to look at the farmland element. So I think that's what they're working on next.
Okay, great.
Yes, um, I'm actually meeting with the, uh, farmland committee next week to kind of get the ball rolling on that.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. Thank you. Any reason to get into executive session?
Oh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, everybody. Have a great night.
Thanks, everybody.